Welcome to the Town of Fort Mill's October the 10th regular meeting. We welcome each and every one of you to our meeting. Please, if you have a cell phone or a computer that might ring or make a noise, if you would silence that so that we can give you our full attention, that would be great. We will stand for a pledge of allegiance and then Councilman Moody will give our invocation.
[laughing] A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray.
Dear God, thank you for allowing us to gather here tonight, Lord, to do the business of the town. Give us wisdom as we make our decisions, Lord, in your name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Council members, you have been provided the minutes of the September 27th, 2022 council meeting. Are there any changes, additions, or deletions?
Here none, I move to approve.
[laughing] I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed?
Y'all will miss me.
Yes, we are.
Where are you going?
Public comment pursuant to Section 2-46 of the Code of Ordinances for the Town of Fort Mill. Any citizen of the town may appear before council for the purpose of providing public comments on any municipal matter except personnel matters. Those who wish to speak must sign in outside of council chambers prior to the start of the meeting, and citizens will be given three minutes each to speak. Do we have anyone signed in?
No, Mayor, we do not.
Okay. Thank you. Then we will move immediately into presentation number one, the grand opening of Banks Athletic Park, Davy Brune.
Thank you, Mayor. What a good way to start a town council meeting, by providing some exciting information about our grand opening of our new Banks Athletic Park. On the monitors, you'll see a flyover provided by Tony McMahon, our staff personnel that handles all of our promotions as far as the recordings and camera sessions. So, again, I'm excited to announce to our viewers that the opening of Banks Athletic Park took place. It officially opened last Monday, October 3rd. We did hold a ribbon-cutting ceremony on October 4th. It was postponed a few days due to Hurricane Ian, but it was a very good event, and we're very excited about that, and should be able to view that ceremony online as well, so if you have an opportunity to check that out. Like to give a little bit of history. Town council approved this project back in 2019. At the time, it was an $11 million project. Lennar Homes donated the property to the Town of Fort Mill in 2014 and to be used as a public park site. We had some, our architects and engineering firm owned the, this particular project was LS3P Architects and ESP Associates for the engineering. They were instrumental in working with Beam Construction Company, which is a company that actually constructed the final product. Want to say a quick thank you to town staff that worked on this project. Our very own Chris Pettit was the, he served as the town's project manager that worked with the ESP project management group to make sure that everything came off and was completed on time and under budget, so he did a terrific job with that. Must also say a quick thank you to Brown Simpson, our Parks and Recreation Athletic Director, Parks Recreation Director, that sat in on just about all of the weekly meetings with the construction company and ESP associates and Chris to make sure we stayed on par with this particular project. Would also like to say a quick thank you to Leroy Springs and Company for their partnership. They worked with us and continue to lease the fields at the YMCA at the complex during our design and construction timeframe for this particular park, so we really appreciate them working with us on that timeframe. Would like to go ahead and give a little bit of information on this park. It is a beautiful park with four ball fields. The fields can handle both baseball and softball with multiple age groups, so it's going to meet the need of many of our programs. There is a scoring tower on site, you can see it there in the center. That scoring tower consists of restoring facilities as well as concessions. There's also a standalone restoring facility located near Fields 1 and 2. So, the, let me back up. The scoring tower is between both Fields 3 and 4. 1 and 2 is along Sparkling Brook Parkway there. You can see just below the second field is, that standalone building is the restoring facility for those two fields, as well as it's in close proximity to our basketball court, which is a very nice court. It is, has the ability to be lit and played at night. Just anyone comes out and plays, actually pushes a button, turns the lights on, lights remain on until 9:30 where they're on a timer and they automatically shut off at 9:30. That follows along the same guidelines that we've used for our other parks in town that have basketball facilities. There's also a very enjoyable playground associated with this park. It's there beside the basketball court, and we've seen a lot of, we received a lot of positive feedback from the public in using that particular playground there. You also see beside the playground, a pretty large picnic, covered picnic shelter. I believe the dimensions are about 70 feet by 25 feet, six to eight tables underneath, I don't, eight tables. So, it's going to meet the need of, you know, for a different variety of opportunities, whether if someone wants to rent that for family reunions, for birthday parties. If it's not being rented, it could, it could meet, it could hold multiple families out there, just having a fun day and a picnic if they want to do that. On this, on this site, there's also, in the far-left corner there, that building is a maintenance facility for the Parks and Recreation Department where they can house, or they will house some staff members out of there on a daily basis to maintain the park and kind of, and keep an eye on the park as well during the day. Will also add that we will have some staff in the scoring tower as well on the upper floor, keeping an eye on the park on that side of the park. So, that park will be staffed Monday through Friday, between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. There'll also, whenever programming's going on out there, you also have town staff available then overseeing those programs. Just want to invite the public to come out and enjoy the amenities of this park. This is a, it's, it's a minor miracle, if you will. If you've seen the property prior to the beginning of construction, to the final product, it is, it's been a huge success. The town's very proud of it, I know you are, and we look forward to the citizens of Fort Mill enjoying this park for many, many years. Mayor, I would like to add that the parking, you see two parking lots on this site. Parking lots, they include combined over 300 parking places and spaces. So, we're, we're asking that all the citizens, all the public that comes out and enjoy this fine park, make sure we park in those parking lots. We do not want to park along Sparkling Brook Parkway or any of the adjacent roadways in the neighborhood of Waterside. There's plenty of parking there, even when we have the events and programs going on, so staff will be looking into some additional signage to avoid that in the future. But, again, we're very proud of the park, we're looking forward to the use over the next, you know, several decades, but just wanted to make sure that all of our viewers were aware that we have, that the park is open and ready for play.
Thank you, Davy. And just as a little addition of the history, many years ago, we were very fortunate that Springs provided us, Leroy Springs Company, a recreational complex that included at the time, two ball fields. They ultimately added a third, and we were blessed to use those for many, many years. The plans for that land changed, and we were notified that we could no longer lease them and would need to look for an opportunity so that we could continue our programs. And I think the importance of those programs is certainly evidenced last year when one of our teams in our rec program eventually went on to win the World Series in their age group. You know, so it was vitally important to kids that enjoy that sport and were very successful at it, to have continuation of those programs. So, when we were planning this particular park, it was to replace the fields that were going away at the Leroy Springs Complex, which is now the YMCA and Complex. So, it fulfills, you know, a need that our community had, and our programs have been exceedingly successful along those lines. I've had a lot of great compliments since the park has opened, and Davy, to your point, I know we had some folks that decided to park along Sparkling Brook. There's, you're very kind, I won't be. There's no excuse, there's over 300 parking spaces, there were open parking spaces, and people parked along the street. You're risking those that need to get to the park, people that drive along that street, and you have safe and adequate parking at the park, so please use it. Please do yourself a favor and help out everybody else and use the parking that's provided, because we plan to have more than enough to handle the traffic for each of the events that would be held there. So, I too echo your thanks for the Springs, Leroy Springs has been exceedingly patient with us, because we probably thought we were going to get this done years in advance of the actual date, but I can say I never dreamed we'd have anything quite that pretty. The pictures are great, Tony, but to see it up close and in person is entirely different. It is a beautiful facility that I'm so proud of in our community. So, thanks to all staff, thanks to the rec department, thank you, Chris, for setting a new standard. Guess who gets to do all the projects now if it comes in on, on time and under budget? So, you just did yourself a favor, right? But I know council too will probably have comments, because this is a wonderful addition to what we offer to our community.
Yeah, question on the under-budget part. I know this project, I believe, stretched over a couple of budget cycles. We're now in our new one. Will those additional funds, there was some wrap-up we talked about during our budget meetings, so there's a little bit of funding in the current budget, but those additional funds will be really realized or reallocated during the current year, or can you give me a little more detail?
That's correct. We were approximately a million dollars under budget from the total budget. We've budgeted that for this year for things that come up for this year. There's no expectation that we spend a million dollars, you know, this budget year, but that money is still being held available for this project, for those improvements that do show up.
Perfect. And notice on some of the Facebook comments, some ideas that people had or programs people would like to see added to this, what's their best way to communicate with our Parks and Rec Department about programs they'd like to see the town offer?
That's a very good question. They can check our town website at www.fortmillsc.gov. They can access the Parks and Recreation webpage from that, from that portal, and reach out to Brown Simpson, our Parks and Recreation Director, and he'll, he'll take their feedback, and we'll, you know, at least put that information to good use and study it and see if we can look for viable options in the future.
And I think too, Lisa, that once we have our facilities plan that we have been talking about for some time in, it will allow us to determine a lot of the things that I'm sure you saw that I saw, we've talked about previously, and needed to make the best decision, both economically and efficiently, to add to our programs. So, I think once this facilities plan is complete, it will give us what we need to make those decisions.
And programmatically, it does best to reach out to Brown, but we do have a place on our website specific to Banks Athletic Park, where if you see something at Banks Athletic Park specifically that you think, well, there should be a bike rack here, you can reach out to us, there's a form online that you can fill out, it gets sent directly to staff, and we can respond that way.
Does that form also apply to all other parks?
We have it specifically for Banks Athletic Park, we can certainly do that for all other parks.
I think that might be a nice idea, because there's some parks in Fort Mill in particular, I can remember being very, very young and playing at the Sprinkler, Hare Street Park, which has been gone for years, I might add. So, at least it's an avenue, to Lisa's point, for our community to provide input on things they'd like to see. That doesn't necessitate that every email's going to get an immediate answer, response, and something constructed. Nothing happens that fast, but it does allow us to put that into consideration as we work through the planning process for each of our parks.
Yeah, I'd like to follow up. As you said, great success, this was one of those plans that came together from the beginning, through the development plan, property, the developer help, impact fees help, staff did a great job, so, you know, this is just one of many that we wanted to tackle, and thank you, Mayor, for saying this is a replacement for property that we're losing access to, but to the public, that's a, you know, I'm a soccer family, I understand it, there's lacrosse, there's all these sports now that are being played, so we're well, well aware of them. If somebody's got 50, 100 acres they want to donate to our rec division, we'd be glad to take it, but to take this as a, you know, it's a long deal to get this worked out. So, did we use, that's what, 25 acres?
25 acres.
So, is all, I know there's a creek or something, or a valley, is there any, are we fully utilized all that property?
There's no usable acreage.
That's what I thought. I just want to make sure it came up.
We're looking to get what we have on it.
Yeah, yeah, and I just want to make sure that was stated, because, but it was a, it's a great venue, it's beautiful, and look forward to seeing a lot of the community utilize it.
I remember right when I started, the road was gravel, right, at the very beginning, like 2016. To see it now, it's phenomenal. I mean, what was, was Dobie's Bridge Park the last park that we built before this one, right?
I think so. We don't have any newer parks than Dobie's before this one.
Yeah. It's beautiful, thanks, rather hard work, good work. I wonder how many dirt, truckloads of dirt had to be?
A lot.
And because this is videotaped, I would like to remind the public, it is for the public's use, but how about taking care of it? You know, I, I will tell you, I've been to some of our parks, I know our staff is diligent in their efforts to keep them clean and safe, and yes, we do have a process for reporting anything that's broken and might be a hazard, please use it, but of all things, you know, you see, see your own kids jumping up and down on something that's not supposed to be jumped up and down on. Tell them to get down, pick up your trash, use the receptacles, don't mess with the hay bales, don't mess with the scarecrows. So, yeah, I'll be a mom today and say, treat, please, we work hard to provide the best community possible to the people that live here. It's up to us to take care of it, so please, treat it gently, and we will enjoy it a lot longer if you do, so thank you.
Should I leave it better than you found it?
For access to this facility, and though we're encouraging people to come off Banks Road.
Absolutely.
Correct?
That is the entrance.
Yes.
Good point. And to Lisa's point, come from Bank Street, left on Sparkling Brook, and the park is on the left. It is a town park.
And I think the address is 2346?
64.
2364 Sparkling Brook Way, but come to Bank Street.
Yeah, go past Northern.
Redway.
Mm-hmm. Looks great. It's beautiful. Thank you.
Good job, man, thank you.
Thank you. No further comments, we will move to presentation number two. Proclamation to be presented in recognition of the Planning Department and the Community Planning Month. Penelope, I know that you are our current planner. Here's a bunch of whereas's, so, I think because of the speaker, how about I read it and then I deliver it to you? Is that okay?
Sure, that's great.
Community Planning Month proclamation, whereas change is constant and affects all cities, towns, suburbs, counties, boroughs, townships, rural areas, and other places, and whereas community planning and plans can help manage this change in a way that provides better choices for how people work and live, and whereas community planning provides an opportunity for all residents to be meaningfully involved in making choices that determine the future of their community, and whereas the full benefits of planning requires public officials and citizens who understand, support, and demand excellence in planning and plan implementation, and whereas the month of October is designed as National Community Planning Month throughout the United States of America and its territories, and whereas American Planning Association endorses National Community Planning Month as an opportunity to highlight how planning is essential to recovery and how planners can lead communities to equitable, resilient, and long-lasting recovery, and whereas the celebration of National Community Planning Month gives us the opportunity to publicly recognize participation and dedication to the members of planning commissions and other citizen planners who have contributed their time and expertise to the improvements of the Town of Fort Mill, South Carolina, and whereas we recognize the many valuable contributions made by professional community and regional planners of the Town of Fort Mill, South Carolina, and extend our heartfelt thanks for the continued commitment to public service by these professionals. Now, therefore be it resolved that the month of October 2022 is hereby designated as Community Planning Month in the Town of Fort Mill, South Carolina, in conjunction with the celebration of National Community Planning Month. As Penelope comes forward for me to hand this to her, we would be remiss not to thank all of our community volunteers that give of their time and their expertise, two of which of our council members, current council members, sat for many years and dedicated themselves to the difficult task of planning and trying to find the best solution for every request that was made. We would be remiss not to give you our heartfelt thanks as well. We all enjoy what you've planned for, so. With that, Penelope, we couldn't be more proud of the work that you do for our community.
And my team. I have three planners, and I'm very happy to have them on my team.
Penelope is a joy. Hope.
Thank you.
Thank you for all you do.
Outstanding job.
We are so fortunate to have Penelope and our volunteers and your staff, so thank you so very much.
Are the planning commission meetings open again? I know after COVID, everything's a little known.
Yes, so for the audience to know, our planning commissions are open to the public. It's the third Tuesday of every month at 6:00 in this room, and, and like the mayor stated, they are appointed by town council, and they're just citizens that volunteer their time. Each March of every new year, we look at new candidates if their terms have expired.
And they do go through continuing education as a part of that process and continue to learn?
Sure, so as a new member, just for the audience to know, if they're interested, first year being on the planning commission, you have to do six hours of orientation one and orientation two, which is provided by the state, and then each, after we look at that, each year you have to have three hours of continuing education class, which we do partner with the City of TEGAK and my staff, and we invite local planners or transportation ideas that are going on locally, so we can inform our boards and commissioners.
Tremendous amount of dialogue, I think, goes at the, goes on at those meetings that would bring a lot of clarity to, I think, the public often has, have a lot of questions and things when it comes to why things were done, how did that get done, why did we do it that way? And a lot of those things get vetted out in those planning commission meetings, so I would invite people to, it's, it's good to, to see the process and be familiar with the process, so.
Yeah, it is great insight into the hows and whys, and what you can do, what you can't do, what's in the best interest of the community, what's in the best interest of the state and all that, so it's a, it's a, it's a good, good way to get involved, get a lot of good information, I agree. Great job.
Thank you so much. We appreciate you and all the efforts. We'll move now to old business item number one, first reading and ordinance amending the zoning ordinance for the Town of Fort Mill, Article 6, Administration, Enforcement, Penalties, and Fees, Section 4-4, Mobile Food Vendors, to amend the requirements for mobile food vendors to provide for a public hearing and to provide for other matters relating thereto. Chris Pettit is our subject matter expert. Chris?
Mayor, thank you, Mayor and Council. We brought this item to you all at the August 8th council meeting for first reading and public hearing. At the time, we did not have any speakers for the public hearing. After a good bit of discussion, council voted to refer it back to the Zoning and UDO Committee for further discussion of some of the finer details of it. So, we took that back to the Zoning and UDO Committee on September 14th, and the latest draft that you'll see is basically the last draft of the staff report, has added four different changes that came out of that committee. Some clarification items, some locational restriction items. We, the committee recommended to clarify what it means to actively move to multiple sites during one mill period, so we've done that in the latest draft. The draft presented on August 8th restricted the number of, maximum number of vendors on any site at any given time. The committee, based off of some regional jurisdictional comparisons, removed that cap. We, the committee recommended to restrict food trucks from operating on residential lots for single-family homes, and then additionally, provide some clarifying language on special events, what it means to be a special event. We've clarified that to be a town-approved special event, so that's what came out of the Zoning and UDO Committee, and that's the changes that have been made to the latest draft that are presented to you. I do realize the staff report includes four different versions, but the last version is the clean version of what came out of that zoning and UDO committee. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
I think it's important, as, again, this is a taped meeting, that it is recognized that the reason that we look at guidelines are first and foremost for the safety of the vendor itself, the food truck, and of the community that would be a customer to one of these trucks. We also have to ensure that they are properly licensed, they know how to dispose of the waste that they would produce or collect, that they're in an appropriate location that can handle their operation, and that we're not creating a safety hazard. So, it is not to do damage or harm to anyone that wishes to do business inside the Town of Fort Mill, it is simply to get us on an even playing field with other municipalities in a safe manner to serve our community.
You stole most of my?
Sorry.
No, that's fine. That's why I just want to state that that's the reason this has been brought back and to look at, not only from, obviously from the safety of the vehicle, make sure it's inspected, safety of parking, where it can be parked or not, so it's not blocking access or creating a blind spot someone's pulling out, or dumping, you know, waste hazards, you know, grease or whatever, so I think that's, and then one other thing is, so somebody doesn't compete with our brick and mortar, it's not a direct competition. Food trucks can be, you know, something very simple, or it can be pretty elaborate, and we're seeing that, I work downtown Charlotte, and you would see where food trucks were be competing with the brick and mortar businesses and not paying any of the taxes or overhead or whatever, so I do want to thank the staff for looking at some of the adjacent towns and communities to put it more on keel, to make it easier to work with, but, you know, they're getting, is it perfect? Probably not, but the goal is to protect the community and protect the food trucks wouldn't want fires, wouldn't want people getting, you know, food poisoning or whatever, so I think it's definitely a step in the right direction.
Well, this gives us a lot more teeth as far as enforcing, I mean, I know you can't know where every food truck is in this town at any minute, I totally get that, but during COVID, we would, you know, they would be parked, pulling my neighborhood up and walked by, and I would just kind of look like that, they don't have this like, you know, they didn't have anything.
It's certainly a lot clearer ordinance than, than we've had in the past, so.
Inconsistent.
It's, it's, it's easier for us to have a It's easier for us to have a conversation with a food truck owner, to explain the regulations and to talk about what you can and can't do. And so from that perspective, it will be better.
Yeah, thank you.
And they will pay hospitality tax.
Correct, correct, yes. Anybody that prepares food is required to pay hospitality, or, yes, hospitality taxes, have a business license, et cetera.
I think like all these ordinances and the modifications, it's important to point out that not only the special committee spent a tremendous amount of time on that, staff has spent a lot of time, and even planning commission has spent time on it. So this has been very vetted out, a lot of thought and a lot of, you know, collective effort to come up with the best version. Like Chris, is it perfect? Maybe not, but at least this goes a long way into doing, addressing something that needs to be addressed in the town, is how to deal with food trucks.
So I do have a few questions about it, just clarification on some things. Again, with it being the ordinance, I feel like we have to make sure it's as clear as possible. And I have not been in the committee meetings or on the planning side of it. So this was my first opportunity of the new ordinance. And I apologize if I'm getting too detailed, but I don't think you can be that when it comes to ordinance. And it's interesting because one of the questions that I had as I'm reading this is we say mobile food vendors, but I never heard the word vehicle until just now, when you mentioned the vehicle. We make the assumption the mobile food truck is a vehicle of some sort, but is mobile defined as something that can move from place to place? So in very basic standards, a lemonade stand is mobile. It can move from my front yard to Gwen's front yard.
Don't have wheels.
But that's kind of what I'm saying is nowhere do we define, and I probably...
And I'm gonna argue with you on that. If we start developing ordinances, I know, but if we're gonna have an ordinance for a lemonade stand, then this process is completely flawed.
Agree. And that's why I'm saying, do we need to say that a mobile food vendor is somebody who is, is a vehicle? And, you know, Barry, I'll lean to you a little bit. To me, it's that legal, how do we make sure we're uber-defining a, this process as being a vehicle that's moving and not a business that moves from spot to spot? Or do we need to?
Well, I mean, I think everybody knows what a food truck is. But, you know, any ordinance can define any facet of an ordinance. So if you want to find it, you certainly can.
Because there's trailers.
No, we're all defining it.
Yeah. To what, Ben?
There's trailers. I know of one particularly.
But it still has to be pulled.
Right.
I mean, there's no other definition. I understand you're trying to get it very precise, and I get that, but this one is one that...
Well, they have to be inspected regardless and approved, whether it's a wagon, a trailer, or a food truck.
A horse-drawn buggy.
Right. It's still, because it has to be inspected if it's, they're gonna be cooking or preparing or whatever.
And again, I don't want a lemonade stand falling under this. That's what I'm saying is, does it need to be more defined? But, okay.
This being first reading, we can look at that between first and second reading. The South Carolina Building Code, which is the International Building Code with modifications, they're having, will be adopting a new code starting in January. And there's, it used to be a little section of the code that spoke to mobile food vendors. Then it was an appendix, and now there's a whole chapter or book on it. So we can see how it's defined there and try and piggyback off that. But we can look at that between first and second reading.
Okay, that'd be great. You know, again, to your point, if there is another standard, if there's a standard set as to what a mobile food truck is, it's kind of like when you use an acronym, you want to be sure you define the acronym. The second question I had, and I apologize if I'm going off, and somebody's welcome to jump in with theirs, but I did have a few. Section E, where we talk about an accessory used to craft brewery. My only concern is, yeah, that's all we have today, but is, you know, what happens if we end up with a distillery? Or is there something else? Or do we have an out for something that doesn't fit that specific?
We have a global out in bullet number five, which is basically, anything not listed, you can go to the planning commission and request approval.
Okay.
And we can change this at any point in time that we feel necessary based on a changing condition.
Correct.
Okay, so for them to come to planning commission, just to understand the timing for that, that would take, they need to plan at least basically two months in advance?
Really just, just a month. I mean, we request application three weeks in advance for something like this, should this get approved. We have, staff has asked for thirty-day delay effective date to sort of, you know, communicate with the food vendors that we have and do all those sorts of things. Part of that can be figuring out how we can handle the requests made to planning commission. It may be that, you know, we just need a week's notice before a meeting, you know, just so that we can post it in an agenda and all that sort of stuff. So we can see, I mean, it probably doesn't need the three weeks like rezonings and annexations do. So we can try and minimize that as much as possible.
Yeah, I'm just thinking they only meet once a month, correct?
That's correct.
So it could be at least thirty days in advance, plus needing to get on the agenda a week or two prior to, so.
Yeah, we post the agenda a week in it, well, not, the week prior to the meeting. So, you know, it could be two weeks prior to the meeting is your deadline.
And Lisa, just, I see where you're going. As declared, the goal was to have ninety-nine point nine percent of the stuff pre-defined, and that's a catch-all. So staff can do all, you know, the vendor, the, not only does food truck have to be inspected and licensed, but the facilities where they're gonna be parked has to be. So those are already gonna be approved, so, and then the, most things that already come up are already covered, but there does need to be a catch-all. And so the thought was, was the planning commission, so it wouldn't have to come back to wait for, get council agenda or whatever. So if there are items that weren't kind of included, we can look at those later on. The idea was ninety-nine percent of them would be already, already predefined and/or approved.
And for those locations that, you know, intend to utilize food trucks, it's a one-time situation to go to planning commission. So let's just take an HOA, for example. If an HOA intends to utilize food trucks at their clubhouse, they can come once, they can come as soon as this ordinance has passed, and we can work out the details. And as long as they stick to the details and don't, you know, change or have some major change in how they want to handle food trucks within the HOA on the amenity center property, then they're, they're good. They come one time.
Okay. That was gonna be one of my questions.
It's not something, in the past, our ordinance required you to get an approval every time you changed locations. This is something where, as long as you're following the approval of the planning commission or, you know, of staff in one of these other areas, you just get approved location one time.
The location gets approved once, and then the truck gets approved once, and then so they, as long as those two are approved, you can go to any one of those locations.
The, the location gets approved once, the food truck gets approved annually. The fire marshal permit, business license permit, those are annual permits.
Good clarification, but the idea, once they're individual, and once they're approved, then they can go to any without having to come back.
Correct.
That was the goal, one of the goals.
Yes.
They're good. Safety is the number one goal.
So, and understanding, kind of tagging on to that, for the written consent, do we have a specific document or template? Or will we have an example on our website for people, for the HOAs and so forth to see? Or just written consent, I approve to have A B C truck?
I apologize.
Sorry, F two?
F two. Town staff would, I mean, we're, I think we would be flexible in the form in which it comes, but simply a letter by an authorized agent, whether it be from a homeowners association president or properties association president. You know, we're gonna be flexible and work with whatever entity it may be, so long as they have the authority to speak for whatever association it may be. Again, that's not to try and add any sort of struggle to the mobile food vendor, it's just, you know, a check.
Yeah, yeah, my only thought was if we had an example of a letter that has everything covered in it that you would need, it might be beneficial, not necessarily for the ordinance, but for our town website.
And I do believe that there was discussion, both last council meeting and in the committee meeting, about the annual opportunity to license them, that they would be given copies of every document that would have the guidelines that we agreed upon. Yes. And that they would get that regularly so that it's not something they would not have an opportunity to view before they could get their license.
When we look at number three right after that, and it's kind of tagging on this specifically with HOAs, I know, you know, we see here HOAs having food trucks all the time. Will we have an active list of food trucks that have been approved on our website so that when we're trying to plan our event, that we already know which ones have met the criteria that the town recommends?
We will work to have an approved list. You know, we can update that. You know, it'll change monthly, it'll change weekly, but yes, we will. The, the idea was to have, you know, locations, speak for locations and get approvals so that food trucks can operate there. And then have a rolling list of, these are all the folks that are approved, food truck-wise, to operate in the town of Fort Mill, and we would share that as often as we could.
Yeah, I'm just thinking the website's a great place to hopefully avoid a few phone calls, that they can be self-sufficient. Bumping back up to E six, and I'm sorry, because we were talking on the other, I didn't want to come back. E six, when we talk about residential lot, does that mean, just for clarity, I can't have a food truck in the road of my house? Like, no, I can't have it in the driveway. Can it be in the road for an event?
It cannot operate in the right of way, ma'am.
Okay, all right. And is that only, nevermind?
That's a safety item. DOT doesn't allow food trucks in their rights-of-way. You know, food trucks are typically larger vehicles. And I say food trucks, I'm gonna say mobile food vendors interchangeably. It could be a trailer, it could be what have you. But, you know, typically they're larger, they're inviting customers to them, running around them, things of that nature. So it becomes a safety issue for us to operate in the right of way. So typically, it wouldn't be allowed in the right of way.
Okay, so I have to ask, snow cone trucks, coffee buses, all the different mobile food trucks that are accustomed to driving through our neighborhoods, they are no longer allowed then?
They are...
Without parking at a designated pre-authorized position?
The way the ordinance is written, they are allowed to continue to do that.
Because they're not parking in hours.
They talk about delivery, yeah, it talks about delivery vehicle, which would be snow cone, ice cream truck, those type of things. Or even the roach coach, what we called them, where they ran around delivering food. So that's what they, construction site. So there's a clause in there to cover those. They're not parked, they're delivering. I think is the word it was used, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Pettit.
Okay, I didn't understand that to be those vehicles. So, okay, thank you. On F five, we talk about no overnight stays. So can you explain to me, where could somebody keep a food truck in the town limits? Nowhere?
They typically will have locations like at storage facilities, you know, where you store outdoor, where you store your boat. You can park there. The idea here is that you can't stay somewhere twenty-four hours a day and continually operate at the same location.
Most town members associations have that language written in as well.
The idea there is to make it so it's not a permanent fixture.
Exactly.
At a location.
You have, you have to be mobile.
Right, exactly.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. The new section G, number three, where we talk about alcohol, no alcoholic beverages shall be sold. I know that in some of our festivities that we've done, we have a mobile beverage truck that I think tends to sell beer and maybe potentially wine. I think I've seen a wine one. Does that mean they'll no longer be allowed without the special permission or still no permission at all?
Subsection H, Public Property and Special Events, clarifies that some of these operational and conditional use requirements may differ as a part of town events. So that would cover that.
Okay, so it'd only be for our own events?
A town-approved event.
Okay, town-approved, not, okay. All right, and would those have to come to us, council, to approve? I know we have to do some approval with that consumption at some of our events.
It would depend. It would depend on the set of circumstances in which they were asking. There's an application they can fill out that would have a lot of data in it. If it elevated itself to alcohol sales to the point that it needed to come before council, it would.
Yeah, there's a, council typically does a public consumption resolution when we have live bands and music and all that sort of stuff when we did the things on Main Street. So that's when it would come to council.
Okay, yeah, just confirming when they come to us. Okay, that's the main questions I had. Thank you. I apologize for taking everybody's time.
Anybody else have questions in regards to the particular item at hand?
Oh, thanks. So we talked about it before, about the updating. So can we just make sure that it's monthly, at least the food trucks get updated on the site?
Yes, yes.
On the website. I know it's gonna be, it's just, it's gonna be some rolling off, some rolling on, but we'd say, you know, at least monthly, so you'll be relatively up to date.
We'll establish a process. I can't speak to how it'll work this current second, whether it be, but yes, we'll have, we'll have a link that you can click and it'll have all the active and approved food trucks within the town.
It behooves us to have it as accurate as possible, but I think it's a bit unwieldy to try and keep it a day-to-day.
Right, that's why I said, we can say at least monthly, that way, and that also gives you some transition period if somebody's rolling off or whatever. So, well, it was on there on the fifth, sorry, I checked it.
I think it's interesting, too, you know, we would have been having this discussion four years ago, there weren't any. And then we had one or two, and now they change as frequently as I change my shoes. You know, it's, there's some that are in, some that are out. So I do think this is a moving target, so to speak. But it's necessary to have at least protocol and guidelines in place. It is absolutely necessary. Further comments, questions? Hearing none. We'll need a motion on this item.
Make a motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve.
I'll second.
I have a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. All right. New business item number one, first reading and ordinance amending the communications towers ordinance within the code of ordinances for the town of Fort Mill, so as to amend the setback requirements for towers. Chris Pettit, you are our subject matter expert.
Thank you, Mayor. Staff in our review of our ordinances that we do from time to time, found in our communication tower ordinance that there are setback requirements for properties that are designated as historic or architecturally significant. The intent of that is, you know, the downtown area and the historic core. There's a significant loophole in that, in that our historic district doesn't cross Academy Street on the south side.
We can fix that.
And, you know, staff felt like the intent of that was to push these communication towers, you know, a little bit away from our historic core. In order to better do that, staff is proposing a setback, a minimum distance of twelve hundred feet from the Main Street Road right of way. We feel as though that will better meet the intent that we already had within the ordinance. And so staff has proposed that, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have on that.
Council?
Yeah, Mr. Pettit, the, obviously I understand the goal. I like the way that's worded, the most stringent of the following three options. So as someone who's read a lot of legal documents, I've seen things written a lot of different ways, I thought it was a good one. But also I have some concerns on not just the Main Street, but also at our, in our corridors. So if it was sitting on the corner of Sprat Street just to pick a, pick a spot. So would also have concerns, you know, the, everybody likes the towers and the, you know, Wi-Fi and cell service and all that kind of stuff, should be... Should be, should be looking more long-term on this, or is that something we should pick up later on? Because, you know, we want to, it's one of those things, it's not a problem till it's a problem, and then we can't deal with it, and kind of going back to the planning department, sometimes you have to look more long-term. We want to make sure there's not a trash dump put right beside the school. So you have to kind of plan that with zoning and things like that. So, you know, we're trying to protect our integrity of the town and the corridors and things. So that should be something else we should include in this, or?
I think we can certainly continue to look at this. We, the reason 1,200 feet was chosen, we do have an existing tower that's about 1,300 feet from the Main Street Road right of way. And the intent of this was not to cause any harm or trouble for that tower or any replacement tower that they may do. But this was really intended, staff's intent in reading this, thought it was clear that the original intent was to protect the historic core. So we are just furthering that cause. But certainly, you know, there are other causes that we may want to look into, such as protecting some of the corridors and things of that nature. And that's something that we could do as a follow-up to this.
Thank you, I think it's important to look forward, but can't second guess until things are actually real. Any further questions? Hearing none, I need a motion on new business item number one.
I'll make a motion to approve first reading of the ordinance as written.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance as is written. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed? All right. We now have information and discussion item number one, progress report on Dobie Bridge Park demolitions. Davey Broom.
Thank you, Mayor. I can then get to share some exciting news.
Air steht is being built.
It's not that exciting.
Just a tad less than that. But there has been some changes in our Dobie's Bridge Park over the past few weeks. These changes have caused quite a buzz among, whether it's residents or visitors to the park. Several years ago, town council foresaw a need to purchase available properties that were adjacent to Dobie Bridge Park, you know, for future expansion of the park itself. The purchase included three properties, each with a house on that particular property site. The town utilizes one of those home sites, and it's used it for a variety of different reasons over the years. But it's for office space for staffing purposes. It's the one nearest the entrance off of North Dobie's Bridge Road. We still use it on a daily basis. The other two properties had homes that sat dormant for several years. And we really did not use them for any other purposes except some, a little bit of fire training for our fire department, it served well for those purposes. But the town recently procured a company to abate and demolish both of the homes. The two homes between our used home there at the entrance to the park and Glen Rock Baptist Church. So if you've been by there recently, you'll notice that there's only a small stand of trees still remaining on the property, the homes are gone. We are, staff is in the process of working with the same company to get the couple of trees, well, it's actually a few trees and oversized bushes removed as well so that they can put down grass and seed and straw to get some grass growing on those properties. But, and so, you know, at this time, again, this project was budgeted for in our recent fiscal year that just was completed in September 30th. So we were able to get it, get in that timeframe, get the homes removed. So at this point, there's no specific or designated use for those two properties. It just gives us the flexibility with the homes gone now, that when council, whatever decision you may come to in the future on how to use this property, how you want to see it used, it gives us flexibility to kind of move forward pretty quickly without having to go through this abatement timeframe and the demolition of the homes. So we feel like it's a benefit to the site, and it kind of cleans up, you know, the view. So that just recently happened, and we should have the trees removed very soon, next week or two.
I would like to publicly thank Councilman Cook. She's the one that noticed when those houses were for sale, the two houses. We had already purchased the first one, that it would be a good opportunity to expand parking or other activities at that park. And that's the kind of future thinking that I hope everyone appreciates, is that when we see something that we know we will have a use for, certainly if we had waited until today, it would have cost us three, six times as much to purchase that property. So it was a cost savings, it was a good opportunity to look ahead. And I think once our facility study is in, we will be able to better make decisions on what is the highest and best use of that property for the town.
What is the total acreage right there between the combined properties?
I should have been prepared to answer that question, but I don't know right off, it's...
It's not over three to four acres.
I was going to say three acres, maybe.
Yeah, I was thinking three point something. That's thumbnailing it, okay?
Chris Pettit can get that GIS thing going and measure it real.
But I do think this is the type of thinking that I hope we get better and better at.
Absolutely.
I haven't been down there, but, and there may be a reason, but is there maybe a reason to take the trees down, but is there anything that would keep us from leaving them up other than being, I guess it's one step closer and we get ready to put something in motion?
It's just those center trees up against the house.
I haven't seen them, I don't know if they're good-sized trees or what they are.
No, they're hedge scrub edges.
It's, yeah, it's just one oak tree that is, it's past its life cycle. It's dying, if not already dead, and it's in the back corner near the church that we, we need to address it anyway because it's, it has pretty good sized limbs falling.
Right, okay.
Well, I like that thing.
Just a thought.
That is good thinking, don't cut trees if you don't have to.
A year or so before we do anything with this. But I have a feeling that's going to be some type of use pretty soon.
Soon. Thank you, I appreciate that. Any further questions for Davey? Hearing none, we will move forward to discussion item number two, progress report on the town of Fort Mill's tennis pickleball facility project. Davey?
Thank you, Mayor. This is another exciting project that we have ongoing now that we have pretty much finished up the Banks Athletic Park. This is the project that's ongoing, is, we're dedicating a lot of attention to. As you can see in the photo here, there are six and one-half courts on the site currently. The project itself for this tennis facility will consist of replacing or renovating the four lower courts, which on this picture is actually the upper courts. But the way the courts are laid out on the site, topo, they're down near the woods, it's a lower area. We will essentially be taking those up and putting new ones in in their current locations. And then we'll be installing two full courts on the site where the half court's located. And so if you can, if you see the half court, you can just add another half to that, and then one directly to the right of it between it and the parking lot. That is soon to be, the grading on that is scheduled to begin within a week. They think they may even get started this week on it. And the project itself also consists of the two upper courts, which are on this photo, the two at the bottom of the photo. Those are being repurposed from tennis courts into eight pickleball courts. We have, we're working with ESP Associates to monitor this project as a project manager for the town. I will take the lead on this one since Chris spent over a year or so on the Banks Athletic Park. But we have been in contact with the construction company, Southern Builders of York County. They have been on site to relocate the transformer, pad mount transformer, that was right behind the half court. Transformer's been set off, off to the side. They're in the process of setting the transformer pad, which is required by Duke Energy. And they are installing underground PVC pipe for the future electric, underground electric pipe, electric lines coming to the new transformer that would feed the new restroom facility as well as the lighting for the, all of the courts. So in this project, the restroom facility will have public restrooms as well as an office space and a storage room for the tennis instructor to utilize year-round for that. The goal, right now, we're working with the companies, the goal is to have the tennis courts and the pickleball courts installed by, in the year 2022. Now, that's very aggressive, we're trying, we're racing against time and weather. And, but we have been in contact with the company, Court One, that is going to be installing the courts and pickleball courts, that they still tell us they're in good shape and have us on schedule to do that. We just, once we get the site graded where the half court is, they'll be able to come in and work on each court in unison until they get them completed. With this project, it also includes brand-new fencing for all of the courts as well as brand-new lighting for all of the courts. So we're very excited about this project, we hope, we hope it moves along rather quickly. I will, we are estimating that the overall project will be completed around the May of 2023 timeframe. And that's, that's really, if we can get the courts installed early, then the fencing would come with the courts and the lighting will come with the courts. But then they, the construction company could really dedicate the winter to build the restroom facility and office facility. So it would be, we anticipate it being, the winter not really holding up a whole lot with that part of the construction. So we're excited that it's underway and hope that it moves fairly quickly over the next few weeks or so.
I think it's important to note that we do get calls in regards to pickleball courts. And I've seen a number of them on social media as well. The restroom facility will be, other than closing the gaps in the tennis courts that are this wide, the restroom facility will really help with the programs that are run out there so that coaches don't have to leave to take a kid all the way around to the front of the building to get to a restroom. So it's, it's going to be an excellent project. The restroom facility is also very close to one of the entrances to the greenway, and that parking lot is used quite often for folks with bicycles that go out on the greenway and ride. So all in all, I think it's going to be a multi-purpose project, and I'm very excited about it.
Also, I'm out there every Sunday morning running the trails, and I see runners or hikers, I'll talk to them, say, hey, look, we're going to have restroom facility here, they're excited about that. Every Sunday morning, you'd be amazed how many people are on the tennis courts, you know, probably 20, 30 people every Sunday morning. And I mentioned the tennis courts being done and the pickleball courts, and just the reception every time is just, is just, I mean, people are ecstatic about that. I didn't realize how big of a deal that was. I do, when we first, this first came to us, there was some urgency in getting it done with the weather to, for Court One, but they're saying it's not an issue up until, I know the hotter the better for those, for those courts, right?
Right, that's correct, the hotter the better, per se, and, but we've, because of the timeframe it has, it has taken to move transformers, getting the...
Stormwater arranged.
Everything, yeah.
Yes, it is.
It's one of those, you get excited and you rush out to get it started, then you have to start following the process. And the process is very painful, as the mayor says sometimes. But the process has begun, so that's what I'm, I still have high hopes that if we can get the site graded where the two new courts are going, there's no reason why Court One can't just roll in and start, start their work.
Any potential supply chain issues with the procurement of, you know, the Musco lights or fencing or anything else?
None that I'm aware of at this time. We've, everyone seems to be on go and have everything we need.
We'll just use the same companies that all these hospitals, the car wash, the drugstores, they don't seem to have those issues, just, and they're up.
But, yeah, and the only, the only one I'm not really certain about is the restroom facility and office, any of the supplies, materials for it, still a little ways out with that. So unless anything changes, we should be in pretty good shape. But as far as the courts and the lighting and fencing, we should be on time with it.
Yeah, I was just going to follow up the excitement, because pickleball is in itself, I get...
It's a big deal.
Quest, at church, say, when are we going to get the courts? There's a lot of tennis players there, the bathroom's going to be phenomenal. And I just want to thank you, overall, this is a nice meeting where we're getting progress reports. We're moving forward, because sometimes you feel like you're beating your head trying to get things done. I know we all have our pet projects we want to get done, and it's just nice that we're getting some movement, opening the new field, we've got, you know, we're getting stuff done. And I want to congratulate everybody and thanks for the staff, and just keep it up. And is anything, speaking from the council, I think I can say, anything we can do to help facilitate, just keep the stuff moving is what we want to do, because there's definitely a need out there, and I think pickleball's going to pick up this, you know.
Immensely.
I had no idea how popular it is, but some person at church walked in and said, I have a great idea, why don't y'all get a pickleball court? And I said, guess what, it's under construction. And I thought, man, I've never been able to say that.
But, you know, someone had that in the country.
Davey, do we have any signage out there that talks about the progress of the project or what's to come, to your point? You know, he's talking about it, but do other people who don't talk to councilmen or know what's happening at that area?
That's a good point, we do not at this time, but we will have some, similar to what we had for the amphitheater site, large enough on their fencing, construction fencing, that will explain what's going on out there.
And they'll start taping it on before.
Yeah, I agree.
All right, wonderful, thank you for the reports, they're very beneficial to council and our community. Executive session, please note council may take action on executive session items listed on the agenda when they come back into public session. We do have one executive session item this evening, receipt of legal advice relating to potential claims and ongoing legal matters. I will need a motion for us to move into executive session.
Make a motion to move into executive session.
I'll second it.
All right, I got a motion and a second, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, all those opposed, thank you, we will return. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to return to regular session.
I'll make a motion. Don't worry, I need to do it.
Can I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, all those opposed. Please let the record reflect that no vote was taken in executive session, and we will not have an item to consider now. So with that, Mr. Willis, I'm going to start on your end.
Oh, interesting, so it was very nice to see progress being made on the, I want to thank staff again about, you know, the ball field opening up, progress being made all around. I think some comments were being made about, you know, scarecrows, that's a great event. We walked around last night, it's really nice to see young people out running around, playing ball, you know, young couples walking and pushing the stroller, stopping and looking. It's just really, you know, what we envisioned small-town America for. People talking, you know, stopping on the street, talking to each other. And, you know, I know there's a lot of work goes into that, and the Main Street, closing the Main Street, I know it caused some people issues, and some people didn't love it. But it's just really good to see people out and about enjoying the weather. And if you haven't been out, I would suggest take the time to go out and enjoy it, because it's just, it's a really, that you really appreciate the town that we live in.
Thank you, Mr. Moody?
Yesterday, went to district office, they had a George Fish documentary viewing about the school and a lot of alumni there, it was probably 45 minutes, and it was really good, I learned a lot. As Ron White reminds me, I'm the only one not from here up here.
Ron White?
You, you, I said, Ron reminds me. But great job on the ballpark, and to your point, you know, we are very fortunate with what we have here in Fort Mill. I was home over the summer, and I was driving through the country, I had to meet my parents, and I saw a ball field, or a park, and... and I saw a ball field or a park and I was shocked. And I turned around and looked and the full court basketball wasn't like what we have at Banks, but it was grass. There were two courts and, or two goals and it was just not even dirt, it was just grass had grown over and porta johns out in this park and the bleachers were center blocks. You know, and I, and I turned around to take a photo of it and I was just shocked and, and it was a reminder for me of what, what we have and how fortunate we are that live in the town we're in. It's just a great place. It is really a great place and for the staff and all the hard work you guys put in to keep it going, we, we really appreciate it. Thank you for everything.
Ronnie?
With my comment, while I go about all the people moving around on Main Street, I was coming from the golf course Sunday and people were crossing Main Street right at the bottom of the hill and I had to stop to wait on people. It's very dangerous. We really need a crosswalk, crosswalk in that area. And the other comment, the reason I text that message out, the other day I came by to drop my water bill off, I was just kind of shocked when I saw the vendor sitting in the, you know, setting up in the parking lot. So that's the only reason I said that.
Yeah, and that's, and I'm glad you asked. It was just a vendor that had reached out to us and said, look, I'm not, I don't want to sell anything, I'm, you, the town's been kind enough to allow them to take part in our events over this season and they just wanted to give back a little bit and so they said, you know, we just want to give away some food and it worked perfectly in time wise, timing if you will, because we had our second Saturday service.
Free food out of the top and got some.
You gotta clean the trash first.
That's right. We use as a, as an incentive and a thank, and a, and a way to say thank you to our volunteers for the, for the first, the second Saturday service season. This is our last one for the year, we'll kick them back off again next spring. But I think, my understanding, we had 30 or so volunteers for Saturday.
Yeah, I saw them all, all together going down 21.
Yeah. We, the only reason we picked Town Hall for that site is for every second Saturday service, we send everyone out with supplies and we ask them, in order to save money, any supplies they have left over, bring them to Town Hall and we always leave barrels out or containers for them to put their, whether it's their safety vest or additional trash bags. So because they were accustomed to coming back to Town Hall, we figured while they're here, just have them walk across the parking lot and grab, grab a box of food and take it home.
Yeah, with everything going on down Main Street, I said, boy, this one guy's well keybait down here.
But this, they, the vendor was very, very thankful.
Everything downtown's looking great with the care crew crawl and those people everywhere is just nice to see people out milling around.
I just love the fall season.
Lisa?
Um, question at Banks Athletic Park, do we have Wi-Fi there? Because I know so much of the baseball softball reporting now is done digitally.
We have internet there, but I don't know that we have Wi-Fi. Is it?
We, we don't, I mean, we have, again, internet for staff in the buildings, but we don't have Wi-Fi.
Is this one of the parts that we talked about for Walter Elijah and Comporium had, we would have to pay for it? Is that what I understand?
We would have to pay, we would have to pay for it, yes, ma'am.
And you're right, I'm with you, I see a lot of the reporting that's taking place from ball games.
Well, most everybody, from IT perspective, you start providing Wi-Fi, you open yourself up to all kinds of security issues. With cell service, you really don't need that. You can do a MiFi or you can use your phone as a hotspot if you need that, but there again, the IT guys, you need to talk to them before we start providing Wi-Fi service because it's, it can open up a lot of caveats.
We've talked about it a multitude of times.
Years.
Years, you're right, you're right.
I was just asking if we had it. The other thing is the economic partners, I visited or was on their call they had on the 30th, the end of the month, and it's really impressive what that group does for us and really hearing the information that they talked about and the presentations that they bring. It's a good organization and we're very blessed to have some people working for us without charging us in some ways, but no, just kind of a shout out to them and I thank you for what they're doing and, um, thank you, Chris, for representing us on that organization.
That's an enjoyable job, but thank you for acknowledging it because they, they're a great group and they're a group of problem solvers that are putting their efforts towards the town. So that's, thank you for acknowledging that.
That it, so, okay.
Alan? I've got a couple notes here. Quality of life, we always talk about quality of life in Fort Mill and I think that the fall season here, a screenshot, a snapshot of that, it perfectly represents that, almost like a Norman Rockwell painting or you're seeing all the activity, everything from the, the scarecrow crawl, seeing all the, just the creativity in those all around town, even though the ones on Main Street look like people standing there loitering at four o'clock in the morning when I pass by there. The second Saturday cleanup, like I said, that was, that has been a, a, a great success. We, we got rained out a couple times, we didn't do it when it was hot. Jam Rock Jerk Spot, you mentioned them, nicest gentleman in the world, I hope to see him at more events in the future, absolutely great. The, I talked to Chris Saradelli about, about continuing to clean up through the wintertime, even though it's not a, a sponsored function, still having trash bags available where, you know, it doesn't need to be an organized event to be able to get out there and, you know, pick up trash. If you see it, do your part and everything, pick up. With Main Street being closed, weekends on Main, just absolutely great there, the weather's beautiful, the farmer's market was just, was, was bumping this weekend. You know, you got kettle corn being cooked, you got, you know, boiled peanuts, which are fantastic from that vendor there, all the fresh, fresh food and fruit and vegetables and plants and flowers, it's just, it's, 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 you know, it's not perfect, but we're pretty, we're pretty dang close to it, so thank you for everybody involved.
Thank you. Ian?
Enjoyed attending the monument placement for George Fish today, several of us were there and it was a neat kind of coming together for the community to be able to see of all ages, you know, different forms and fashions of, you know, the school that it was and what it turned into, a lot of us have gone through there, but good gathering for the community, it was really neat, enjoyed that today, both at the district office and to close down Steel Street, it was pretty neat to have the band come out and play.
Play the horse.
Yeah, yeah.
And I did it.
The second Saturday, I was gonna mention that as well, I thought was, my first thought was seeing all the freeway pumpkins that were placed around, it was neat to see them full of trash, you know, thought it would be fun if somebody decorated one of them, I was waiting for that to happen somewhere, but didn't see it before they got picked up, but, and just, I don't know why people throw trash on the side of the road.
It's awful.
I'm just perplexed as to how, what makes that right in somebody's mind.
McDonald's bag thrown out.
It's just awful.
Yeah. And just another random thought, daylight or days are getting shorter, leaving, a lot of people be leaving, coming home in the dark and just a reminder to grab a friend, check headlights, taillights, brake lights. I checked mom's the other day and she didn't have any brake lights.
Oh, my.
Both bulbs run out.
Oh, my.
Yes, it happens and you don't know it, it's behind you, so, I know. So just grab a friend, check headlights, taillights and don't drive around with your bright lights on. It's a whole nother thing, but anyway, that's all I got.
I would like to point out, and I'm sorry that she has left, but our Penelope attended the York County Leadership Training in the past year and one of the projects, if you've ever been affiliated with one of these, they choose a project as a class to go and do something significant towards an issue that we all face. And her class chose NAMI, the National Association or Alliance, National Alliance of Mental Health Institute. And we did a proclamation sometime ago, we did green ribbons on Main Street, we've bolstered support for after the pandemic, our employees to get help if needed. There are a lot of things that we're doing, moving forward with our trails and passive parks where people can get out and reconnect with nature. I was asked to do a presentation Saturday morning at the Walk. They raised a significant amount of money for this particular entity and their only goal was to raise awareness, just raise awareness and get everyone talking about it to try to de-stigmatize it. And a couple of the speakers were, Kevin Tolson was just, it gave you cold chills to talk about how even people with insurance and means and resources have a difficult time getting help or getting the pathway to get help. Tommy Smalsi talked. It was a very, very good event and I was very pleased, Chris. I think our own town staff, Chris was there and walked with baby Dada and I think our own town employees raised over $2,000. And Penelope herself raised over 800. So if you so choose, you can go out and make a contribution on the NAMI website for the folks that did the work for the town and for Penelope and I have never, we just, on and on, on, all the people that had experienced an opportunity to work with Penelope couldn't say enough good things about the person she is. So we should be very proud of her and how she represents herself in our community. So I thought that was great. The George Fish signage was a very interesting couple of days and events, some really great people that I'm sure those of you like you and I that went to Fort Mill, we went to school with some of the relatives of these folks and, and it was interesting. It was, it was very interesting, so we'll, we'll talk more about that. I did note today, when I went to the park, the, nobody's adopted Steel Street for second Saturday. It was awful today from the bypass up. If somebody wants to do it on a Saturday, I'll go with you. I'll, I'll help you because it's, it's pitiful. I mean, it was awful. You know, so maybe to your point, maybe we don't do that, but we pinpoint areas, particularly the gateways into town, it just says bad things. It's also, the leaves are falling, not only are the days getting shorter and the kids are out driving with headlights, but the leaves are falling. I am going to adopt two of the storm drains and spring branches at the bottom of the hill and I clean them out anyway, so might as well.
Make it official.
Might as well make it official, but, you know, the, these are the times that little things we do make a big difference in our community. So ball fields just touch us my heart, I'm, I'm still so proud and happy. With that, let's do an adjournment. Anybody want to make a motion?
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Anybody second? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, all those opposed, nay. Thank you.